I'd like to call the Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, November 3rd, 2014 at 4 o'clock. To order, please rise to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Adoption of agenda. Any additions or deletions?
Make a motion that we approve-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I want to add one thing. I'd like to add employee wages on our new business E. I'm sorry, Jody, please go ahead.
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda with the addition of E employee wages.
Motion by Clerk Keats, supported by Trustee Boyd. Other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Public comments. Any public comments at this time? No public comments. Approval minutes 10-6-2014. Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Sheriff's report. I do not have- did we get the updated one yet, Jeanette? I have not gotten the updated sheriff's report yet.
I have September.
Do you?
It was emailed to the whole board.
And September's there, but I don't- not on the table.
I will get the new one though.
Okay, September was the newest one that came in.
We will make that available as soon as we get it in.
Well, it gets- it goes to everybody now. Goes to all five of you.
Yeah, okay. I like that a lot better. Fire Department report. Chief?
Afternoon everyone. Real quick before I get into everything, please receive and file the month end report.
Thank you.
And with that, just really quick, a week and a half ago, the county tech team met out at Pine Tree Acres to conduct two days of trench rescue training. So on behalf of the entire county tech team and the fire department, I want to personally thank Dave Rogers and the whole crew over at Pine Tree. Dave donated the time and labor, the excavator operator in the area to work in. And as I'm sure everybody saw the news last week, that extra training paid off for our county tech team. So, thanks again, Dave. That's really helped us out. Okay. One item that I sent everybody from the board, we have an application for hire. And I've forwarded that application to you. This is Mr. David Grabzky. Dave lives on Place Road in the township. David comes to us completely certified firefighter one and two, has man operations, confined space operations, and several other certifications that he received while he was in the academy. In addition to that, he's also EMT certified, state licensed EMT. So, this is a plus all the way around. He's trained in everything and he's a township resident. We held the oral interview approximately a week and a half ago with the command staff, and David scored outstanding with the command staff. So with that, the command staff has requested I forward this and formally request that the board approve David as a probationary firefighter with the Lennox Township Fire Department. Dave is here, as you can see, with us tonight to answer any questions that the board may have.
You're okay with him not going to the fire department through a call?
Yeah, that's okay. We'll fix everything.
Can I say on here that you were at the afternoon shift, so you would be available in the morning, which is actually needed here?
I'll make a motion that we authorize hiring of David Grabzky to the Lennox Township Fire Department.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion passes.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. That concludes any issues that I had. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. EMS report.
You know, with the Friday being the 31st, if they only being the 3rd, we'll get a report out to you, but we're still compiling data at this point for the month.
Okay.
We'll get something on the sound to the board.
Thank you. DPW report.
I ask the board to receive and file unless they have any questions, it'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for DPW?
I just noticed there's a lot of missed days.
Yeah. Part of that, you may have recall, beginning around the first of the year, Miss Diggs went to a new system under a new law that the governor had signed into. Everything has to be posted online now, so every Miss Diggs that I receive, whether it has to be marked or not, I have to go online and indicate, is it marked, is it cleared, is there any other, anything that's in a way that they may be working with. So it's a new system, and yes, and I think partly with the two gas line incidents last summer, everybody's calling for, from decks to flowers to, it's almost kind of beyond ridiculous. Plus, we've had a few different projects where it's the contractor's responsibility individually to call, so I may get three Miss Diggs for the same location. You notice we had some gas line extension here along grasses. They've been working on the pipelines. So, whether I mark it or not, that's how many we receive for the month. The good point is, is years passed. With Great Lakes, they used to charge us by the one day they transmitted to us. That's all gone away now. We had to pay the one-time fee for us to get our codes and put into the database. Now we receive everything via email, which is nice with the smartphones. If I'm out and about, I can be right around the corner. I usually have the supplies in the truck. I can take care of it while I'm out and about.
I'd rather see more than less.
Sure. Sure.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, code enforcement report.
The liquor inspections for the month of October have been received.
Just to comment on code enforcement report too, as everybody sees there's quite a few, we've been meeting with Attorney Joppick and making sure that we're up to speed and on point with all of these, so.
Yes, and if I could, Mr. Supervisor-
Sure, Attorney Joppick.
I will be issuing, we did have a couple meetings over the last 30 to 45 days going over significant number of code enforcement matters, and that compiled those into a report to the board. That I will, it's just about ready. I should have it out the next day or two.
Thank you. Any questions regarding assessment? Engineers report. Mr. Safe?
The board should have my report. No questions. Proceeding file.
Actually, I do have one question, and it's really just clarification. It's neither here nor there. The grant application, the $5,000. I remember that we, it's the fee, and I remember we talked about how we can use grant money sometimes to pay that fee. I didn't know if that was the part grant we talked about, or this one. I'm just curious if that money can be paid through the actual grant.
Yes, that's correct. That's the SAW grant application that we did not bill you contingent of not receiving the grant, and we did get approval for the grant. And I talked to Michigan Financial Board last week. They said the package should be mailed to Lennox Township within 10 days, and that will have all the forms necessary for reimbursement. So you just attach our invoice to it, and we'll be reimbursed by the state.
Just so that everybody understands that, there is a $5,000 fee that we paid for the grant application, but we don't have to pay that. We can actually use part of the grant money. So that didn't even cost us anything.
Any other questions for Mr. Safe? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There is a request for stone removal. I don't know, Cam, have you been up to speed on that yet?
Yeah, I did receive. It's actually on our new business.
And it's worth mentioning, we just got this, but it's worth mentioning that she actually hit record numbers this last month of attendees. Is there something worth mentioning?
That's great. She's doing a, I think she's doing a great job, absolutely. Yeah, she had a number of 30 seniors at one time. So that's really, she's drawing that program.
Exercise Joe?
I'm sorry, Jeanette?
Exercise also.
Exercise is up to 23?
Yeah.
Supervisor report. I have a couple things to talk about. One, really good news. We got a checkback from the county for $20,808 for our dust control application that we didn't need to use because our roads were holding up very good. So that's money that goes back in that we budgeted for and didn't use. Number two, I want to bring to everybody's attention, if you're aware of any noxious odor, gas smell, we've been having little issues with pockets of gas, like a gassy smell, where we've contacted some consumers. They were doing some venting, so we just want to make sure, and I think the chief is going to look into it a little bit more too, but I noticed here at the hall, we had issues, and we're going to try and run that down. So if anybody is out and about and they notice anything, please give us a call and let us know. That'll help us determine what's going on. Right, Chief?
Yes.
Second is, the awards dinner for the New Haven Food Pantry is now going to be held at Cedar Glen, December 2nd, 2014, on Tuesday. The dinner is served at 7:00 PM. It starts at 6:30, and 8:00 PM is the awards. It's basically, if you want to go, please see Jeanette. She'll fill you in on, I think they're going to contact the board. Is that correct?
Invitation only, but our board is invited. They will begin-
So if you want to go and you haven't heard anything yet, please talk to Jeanette.
When was the date even?
It is December 2nd. And then I want to make everybody aware of the Food Pantry partnership campaign with Myers. This campaign will feature, it's called Double Match Days. That will be held November 14th through 15th. During these two days, Meyer will double match. Every customer is $10. To simply give donation to help boost, support our pantry partners, this needs that every $10 card purchase, Meyer will give 20. So when we give 10, it results in $30. It's a great way to, they say it's a doubling, but it basically triples that money from $10 to $30, which is huge for our food pantry. It helps feed a lot of people in our community, and it's been one of the best programs out there. We have a lot of great volunteers, and please support them November 14th and 15th. This campaign kicks off November 2nd, but not the matching dollars. The matching ones are the biggest ones for us with the triple dollar, so please get involved. And that's all I have.
Is there a community dinner this year dinner?
I'm sorry, you're right. Thank you for bringing it up. I almost forgot about the community dinner. That is November 21st at the New Haven High School, 7:00 PM, I believe. Correct? 6:30 or 7, but I think it's 7 o'clock.
That's a Friday?
Yeah.
It's Friday. We'll post the information when we get it too, but I noticed the 21st.
So Ron, getting back to the first thing you said, this Cedar Glen dinner, that means we're not hosting the-
No, we're not going to have it here.
Oh.
No.
Okay.
I think she was a little concerned where she didn't want to get in the way of our meeting and stuff, and I know we were trying to work out the logistics of that. This way, that way everybody can just go there and eat and not have to worry about conducting business and stuff. So she appreciated the offer to do it here. Also too, there's some other things where it's just a little bit easier on her without my handling and all the work involved. They're so busy right now, making sure everybody's got food and they get the volunteers in place, and all the holiday stuff coming up, it's going to just be a whirlwind, so. But they sure did appreciate it. That's all I have. Treasurer's report.
I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Support. Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Trustee Boyd. Other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion passes.
The total is $245,129.2. Are they removed? Are they removed at all as of early Monday?
I'll make a motion to approve the orders and bills. There's a total of $245,129.2.
Support. Thank you. Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Trustee Boyd. Clerk, do the roll call, or are you, jump clerk?
Churchy?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Ottenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Drummond?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Trustees' report. Trustee Churchy.
I don't have anything new at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Boyd?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Clerk's report. Clerk Keats.
This doesn't require it, it's working even though. We're gearing up, of course, for tomorrow. We're expecting quite a few people to show. We have roughly 880 ballots out right now, and at the last count, there was, what Carol, 100 or more?
100, about.
About. That we're still waiting to come back, so. That's it.
I make a motion to receive and file a report.
Support. Thank you. Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Clerk Keats. Other discussion? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion passes. Unfinished business. Dome waiter maintenance agreement update.
Last month, after we tabled this item, because the question was asked as far as what's the frequency that it's getting used, I did do a mass email to every employee attached to my report. I did submit a one-page where I copied everybody's responses that were sent to me that did respond. Really, that's the only thing I have to add to this item at this time.
Has it been padlocked out?
No, it was a discussion. I had never heard any motion to do that, so I haven't, I have done nothing to this point. That's still your recommendation though. Until we make a decision on what we're going to do, it shouldn't be used, whether we padlock it or not.
How we pay to build this one? To the state. Did they come in and inspect it?
Two months ago, right after, it was either the first meeting we discussed this or the second meeting we discussed this. That gentleman showed up like a day or two right after our meeting. And that's when I, because I reported last month that I had a conversation with him, and that's where the idea of putting it into a dormant state came from.
Okay, good.
I can hear you.
Did we pass the test?
Yes, he's-
Passed. So we're actually good for another year?
Yeah, because otherwise he would have reversed a violation, and he didn't tell me of any violation at this time.
I would be nervous about that, that we pass the inspection, but there still has not been any maintenance done on it any year.
No, I understand.
So, the one company that you said that put it in, they're willing to come in and one-time do maintenance on it, then we'd be good for a while. I mean, if you're truly concerned about being able to use it here for cleaning up the old building, and just saying that's a viable option now since we've already had inspection.
That's what I'm saying. It's been inspected. It's in working order, so if it is used for that, it would be okay. We're not going against anything because the state, he has inspected it for this year. Going forward, now looking at, you know, everyone that said stuff, it's being used. No, is it being used daily, weekly? No, but it's being used a couple of times a month. It's being used. And I think now that more people are aware of it, and we're not going to be taking anything over to the old building for storage. I would like to see us do maybe the one-year maintenance on it, and let's all pay attention to how much we use it this year, and then decide next year whether or not we should want to shut it down. Because I think a lot of people that haven't been using it before, now that they know it's there and that it can be used, maybe it will be used more.
Get your motion.
I want to hear what everyone else's.
Well, I think the key would be getting ahold of the company and seeing what it would cost us for maintenance. Because like I said, maintenance hasn't been done still. We've done the inspection, and I don't know how often, the old one I don't know, and the dome waiters, how often you have to inspect. Elevators every three months?
180 days.
Okay, so it's the same.
Twice a year. Essentially, the first time we discussed this, the three proposals, it's all spelled out in there, cost, whether you do the contract or per visit, if you want to go à la carte, if you will. And, you know, whichever pleasures.
So we could have them come in, do maintenance, and go for six months. We had inspection and we had maintenance.
Right. There was a fee for just doing the inspection, and then there was a fee for doing the load test.
And this one that you gave us, I don't have a date on this can, but it probably, I mean, even so, go. Right, Philippe, is that?
Yeah, Access 4, I think it was called.
Yeah. They were actually the cheapest.
Correct. And that was the company that installed it.
That you were suggesting. But they had a one-year.
Yeah, they had contract options, but then there was also a snippet in there where it was a per, you know, a fee for like per activity, if you will.
Yeah, maybe instead of going for the year, we'll go the six months, because the use should be more now because we are emptying the other building?
I would think so.
And it should slow down after that, and we may not have to use it.
Here's the only thing-
To the extent of, you know, paying for it to be used.
Yeah, here's the only thing that's, you know, six months seems to fly right by anymore with everything that's going on, you know, especially since we only meet once a month. If we just have them come in and do initial inspection with a load test, we're going to be discussing this again right before you know it. And last year, looking at a different direction after six months, as far as if we're going to continue to use this or not. But if we have enough use, the calls for the testing that needs to be done, I mean, they're giving us a break if we sign the contract and pay it in full, or you can pay as we go, whatever, like I said, the board's pleasures.
Was that the one-year contract or the three-year?
Jody.
I don't have it with me.
I apologize. I did not bring any of that paperwork previously with me.
The three, yeah, the three-year.
I know those quotes are over 30 days old, and that's typically what a quote is good for, but I would feel confident that they would honor those prices, I'm sure, unless something occurred internally in their company since then.
So it's two visits a year?
It was a three-year, Jody? Does it say how much for three years?
If it's a three-year, they do it.
Bottom of the page.
1,890 for three years.
630 a year? Is that what it, $630 a year?
So I understand what you're saying, Cam, instead of keep readdressing this, and if we do it every six months, it's actually going to be more expensive.
Correct. And if we're going to keep this thing and operate it, sign the contract, and that way they'll come take care of it, and nobody-
Right. But if we went with the one-year, and everybody paid attention to how much they're using it, and everybody now knows the dome waiter's there because of this issue, then look at it a year from now when the contracts, when the one-year contract's up and say, do we want to shut it down, or do we want to continue?
How much is a one-year?
630, and it's exactly one-third of the three-year contract, so it's not going to save us anything to do.
By one year, it could be higher to renew it.
It'll probably be a little bit higher, because that, the three-year was 10% less.
I understand what you're saying, you know, see how it's used, but-
I think in a year's time, we will have that cleaned up. And it'll be over here, and I think we should just go for the one-year and then readdress it again.
I agree. I don't want to put any more money into it, because it's items that could be hand-carried down by somebody at some point in that. It's not-
It could be, but when you're doing that, then you're taking a person that could be doing something else. You know, I mean, I'm going to take my own stuff down.
Right, but once the bulk of the work is done within this first year, the other times is, well, okay, a box or two here or there, or a computer here or there. It's not a every day, every week thing.
Oh, absolutely.
Why spend that extra money towards something like that? So I would, I would agree to come up for the one-year.
I'll make a motion to approve a one-year contract with Bright and Philippis. What's the name of the actual company? Karen?
A4 Access.
A4 Access, the one-year contract, and the amount of, sorry Karen?
$630.
$630.
I'll support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Policy manual special meeting.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to, Cam, you wouldn't do the contract, or would that be, I'm just curious who would call it, just to make sure it gets done?
What I'm gonna do this evening is send her an email, or her contact me tomorrow.
So, you'll, okay.
And I'll just discuss here tonight, and then we're scheduled.
Okay.
Deputy Superior?
Anything? Schedule a, I don't know if you wanna do it as a special meeting or a workshop to review the policy manual. I passed it out after last month's meeting, so everybody's had a month with it. I haven't heard any questions, so that's kinda good.
Well, that's why I'm wondering if we even need a meeting. Are we ready to just approve it? Are we ready to just approve it? Do we actually have to have another meeting?
I think we need to have another meeting and just read through it one more time. None of us is, this one that we have now is finally the clean copy.
Right.
Karen, do you have any others on your schedule?
Pick me, pick a day, and I can tell you, so far, I have my throughed out schedule, but sometimes it changes. So, let's see, this week, this week I'm off Friday so far, and next week...
Are you working days or after days, or?
Yeah, it's fluctuate. Some days I'll work, sometimes I'll work a day, sometimes I'll work afternoon, so. Is Wednesday the twelfth at like five-thirty, six to five, okay, or is that too late? I mean, I have, so, right now, it's showing Monday, Tuesday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday off, but it may change, so I hate to-
When's the season start?
Yeah, I hate to, that's right.
It's gonna be before that.
We're gonna do it before that holiday.
Or after.
Okay, Ron, when are you gonna be back? So, it's like that week of Thanksgiving?
Yeah, I'll be in and out.
Want to do it the week of the seventeenth?
Before, Karen, the week of the seventeenth.
So far, Monday's off.
So, do I have the seventeenth? Works for me.
Okay, I'm good after six o'clock on those, on that week.
Yeah, as long as you're gonna do it in the evening, because high-
Say, I'm the seventeenth?
Yeah.
I won't be available, but she'll be, she'll be here.
Does that start printing tax bills? Assessing Office is supposed to be having their information to me by the fourteenth, and then we're gonna start. So, that week of the seventeenth, and then the following week is, you know, your Thanksgiving week there, so. You're aiming for what, six o'clock at length, then, is that what you're saying?
November seventeenth at six.
Like I said, this Friday I get off, if you guys wanna meet, like Friday. Thursday, I'm off at five.
The only other thing we could do is move into December.
July, I can't tell right now.
Make a motion that we schedule a workshop meeting, policy manual meeting, on November seventeenth at six o'clock.
Support. Motion by Clerk Keyes, supported by Trustee Boyd. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Thank you. New business, DPW assistant S four certification.
Can give you all a memo on the timeline of this. Back in September of two thousand twelve, we hired Wesley, or we actually, I'm sorry, we advertised for the position. In November of two thousand twelve, Wesley was hired at ten dollars per hour. And it was stated at that time, after becoming certified with the S four operation, that he would receive a dollar per hour pay increase. Moving forward, in August, it was mentioned during the meeting that Wesley had passed the S four certification. I went back and looked, and that's when I found that the actual motion talked about the dollar raise, and I figured out what the back pay was. I also asked Cam at that time for a copy of the certification, and it states that he received that certification on May first. So, as you can see, I'm gonna put the dollar on the pay that I'm about to pay now, and I figured out what the dollar per back to seven, or back to May first would be. And I would just like a motion to approve that retro payback to when Wesley received a certification.
I'll make a motion to approve Wesley's pay raise from ten to eleven dollars an hour, starting October twentieth pay period, allowing for back pay in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents, which includes six point seven five hours of overtime in that time period.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion passes. Lennox Township Library Snow Removal Request.
It's three hundred dollars, isn't it, Cam? We haven't changed it?
I thought it was three fifty.
Is it three fifty?
I know we raised it the last time, maybe two weeks ago. I thought it was three fifty, but whatever, whatever it was last time. I received a copy of the request, just as well as you did. They're asking for the same services that we've been providing for some time now. My department doesn't have a problem providing these services in the same manner that we've done previously. And we take care of our own properties first, and we get to them in as timely a fashion as we possibly can. Right now, I can't say that, I think the rate would be more insufficient to cover our costs. Salt did go up quite a bit this year. Matter of fact, they're projecting real late into the winter that salt prices are gonna be approximately double of what they were last year. So, hopefully, we don't have as bad a winter as last year, and we use less salt.
Last year, we probably lost money on this, but?
Because of the amount of time and the amount of snow and all that, yeah, we probably did.
Would you recommend, like, maybe a ten or twenty percent increase over last year?
I mean, last year was a monopoly.
Right.
You know, if it looks like we're in a cycle where we're gonna continually to get, you know, it definitely has to be looked at, and that's why we looked at it previously. You know, everything does go up. Equipment's getting older. So, I mean, if you, the board feels like adjusting the rate to help with replacement costs of some of this equipment, I don't have a problem with it, but I feel like we are covering our costs currently.
And the price of gas is supposed to, you're saying?
It'll go up, because it always does.
Right after elections, I figure.
Your recommendations, your recommendations, should keep the same rate? I would leave it the same right now, just because of all indicators. From what I've seen, we're not looking at as harsh a winters last year, which should put us right on track of the previous years of what we're doing and what we're charging.
I'll make a motion to approve snow removal for Lennox Township Library at the same cost as last year.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion carries. Thank you. Synthas Tile and Carpet Cleaning Proposal. Janette, you wanna do a quick summary list?
Summary. It was right before the last board meeting, Synthas was out here and did a couple demonstrations and did carpeting in a couple areas of cleaning, and the tile, a small area there, too. And the results were very good. They cleaned carpeting. It looked almost like new again.
Well, the tile, I was very impressed with what they did with the tile.
The tile came out amazingly good. There was a huge stain from where the sun pump line goes underneath the tiles, and it took it all away, which we've had that tile cleaned before, and it didn't even touch, it didn't look like it was done at all.
Nothing ever touched it?
No. So, the quote for the cleaning, explanation of the different-
You know, I only have one question. Being that we're coming into the sloppy months there, do you get it cleaned right before that, or do you wait until the spring to get it?
Well, because this carpeting hasn't been cleaned.
I hate to see it get cleaned right now, and then everybody brings in all the flop.
Most professionals get, prefer the carpeting to get done twice a year, before the season of winter, and then after.
But we can't afford to do this twice a year at this cost.
Well, if you're doing just the cleaning and not the protection?
I mean, I would recommend we do it in the spring, just because I, we can only do it once a year. I think we'd get the longest value out of it that way, getting it done right in the spring after someone-
Okay, are there chances that their prices will go up between now and in the spring? And the only reason I'm saying that is we maybe should-
We vote right now.
Oh, okay, all right. I was thinking, if we had to table this until that point.
Yeah, if we tell them we're willing to book at this price for the spring, maybe they'll honor it. Or else we'll have to rebid it in the spring if we tell them.
Did not think of that. No one offered that suggestion, apparently. We can check. There aren't a lot of commercial cleaners out there, a lot of the ones that you would think you would want to do.
Well, they were very impressed. I have to tell you, we watched it that day. They were, I was very impressed. That stuff was never, no one ever touched that stain, and they, they got that stain up pretty quick.
Right. Commercial cleaning is totally different than residential cleaning, and there's a lot of places that won't touch our building because of recycled materials, and because these are tiles and not a roll wall-to-wall carpeting.
You know, prior to cleaning too, I would like, recommendation by the DPW, if there's any maintenance issues they have to do interiorly, so that we don't do something that would affect the money we're spending.
And you can see, as we broke it down, all the different areas from where it says offices, that is everyone's actual office. The boardroom, that is the room across from the supervisor's room, office. Community room is this room, plus the little room at the, behind you guys. Admin area is the reception area and all the cubicle area. And then the hallway is right in front of the building department, going all the way down to the supervisor's office, and that little area across from the break room and recycle room. For tile, the lobby would be the main entrance, going all the way down that hall, and then the other two are self-explanatory.
Any other questions for Janette?
If you want me to call them tomorrow or Wednesday and see if we can put this off till spring, if they would guarantee these prices till then, if we book it now, what month would you be looking at doing?
What do you think, Cam? May first?
I'll make a motion to table the Synthas Tile and Carpet Cleaning, have Janette look into how long they'll honor this price. We want to look into it, right?
Well, if they'll do it, if they'll do it May first, do you wanna make the motion to do it?
I'll go ahead and schedule it. Okay, I'll rescind that motion, make a motion to approve Janette to look into signing a contract for May, what did we say, May first? May first carpet and tile cleaning through Synthas.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions or discussion?
Was that for the clean only, or the clean and protect?
Good question.
What's your recommendation on that, Janette?
Well, if we're only gonna do it once a year, I'm gonna protect it, and I'm thinking maybe protect it.
I would say for this, for this room, clean and protect for sure, because, you know, with the seniors eating in here, you would definitely want to protect the carpeting in here. Other areas, nobody really eats.
I would like to see clean and protect everywhere, because, like I said, if we do it once a year-
Make sure it's not right.
Because they always tell you that once you clean your carpet, it gets dirtier faster. And it does, because you've removed that manufacturing protected, you know, with a cleaner. So, I would recommend we go clean and protect.
I think the manufacturing protected is a long one.
Well, yeah, so, I think we could use all the help we could get.
So, I'll amend my motion to include cleaning and protection.
Thank you. Mr. Supervisor?
Sure. So, that we're all clear, is this a motion to approve awarding the contract, or is this to bring it back?
If they'll honor this price in May.
Then it's to approve the contract?
Correct.
Okay.
If not, then it has to go back to the process.
And I'll amend his amended motion to say clean and protect.
You support it?
Yes, I support it.
Thank you. Let's get a motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions or discussion? You agree with that?
For the clean and protect, three thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents. For every carpet and every-
That's just the tile.
That's the tile.
Oh.
Two thousand and fifteen and eighty-six cents for the other.
My bad, yep.
Do you wanna just clean the tile and not protect it?
No, this was clean and protect everything. That's what I was, that's what we just said.
Yeah, for the once a year, or something.
Yeah, because that four hours can be very fast.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Janette. Yeah, it should be noted, too, that, what, how many times has this been done? It hasn't been done.
This room has never been, the carpeting has never been cleaned anywhere.
Yeah, so this is a big investment. We should spend money to keep it nice. Thank you. Employee healthcare coverage options.
Excuse me, can you make that, that proposal on this clear?
Sure, I'll tell you the amount. For the offices, boardroom, community room, and admin area hallway, for a clean and protect, the amount is two thousand and fifteen dollars and eighty-six cents.
And it's for the carpet?
All carpet areas.
Yes, yep. For the tile proposal, for the lobby, the men's restroom, the women's restroom, for clean and protect, three thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents. Employee healthcare coverage options.
This was tabled from back when we approved the, the healthcare, staying with the same policy. It was said that in October, we would start looking at it again, so this is just on the agenda to put a placement here, so none of us forget that he owes us that. I have sent him emails, and I know he says he's waiting for the new rates to come out, and I understand that. But I didn't want it just to all of a sudden be in front of us where we didn't have that option, and we'd be scrambling against.
Okay. Okay.
I've gotten a couple of things in the mail saying, you know, your changes in Blue Cross are coming up. Is that...
They're already out and with the county, they have the same carrier, the prices are already out. Because we have, we have to sign within, I think, two weeks from now.
Prices are out if you have your G to worry first.
That's, we're wondering if it had something to do with the renewal, but you would think those prices wouldn't change.
Our renewal date is March 1st. So, our rates, I talked to Michael this morning and he's hoping to get rates from Blue Cross by the end of the week.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so for right now, I don't have to do anything, just keep those papers on file there. Because I know we're talking about completely changing the program.
Yeah, he was just said that we would start looking at it again in October. So, that's right.
Karen, also the Blue Cross plan that we have right now, if Blue Cross is not offering it next year, they're doing away with it. So, no matter what, we have to change on that.
You went up via through Forts, Bob, Mark, so we had, we had to change ours. There's no choice. Everything's going to be more out of pocket if we stay with, and it's not there, the program. So, we have to do some changes.
Well, when we were looking at it, we weren't even looking at that plan anyway. We were looking at completely changing the program.
And it's probably going to change?
Probably.
Again.
Oh, yeah.
So.
No action on this item at this time? Jordan? Okay. Any other questions or guidance? Okay, so. Employee wages. This is a result from a letter that I received and I know we had spoke about it, I want to say maybe, I want to say maybe six, eight months ago, initially regarding all employees. This letter that I received, which everybody should have a copy from the building department regarding pay. I'm sorry.
I was going to share, but I can hide it.
So, I did receive an email back from trustee Boyd, saying that it should be a recommendation, being that it's under my department. I highly recommend that we keep Ms. Komorowski, also I believe the building department inspectors, mechanical and electrical and building inspector have also issued letters regarding Ms. Komorowski. Did you want to say anything, Mr. Rimes?
She deserves a lot more than she's getting, let me put it that way. And I agree with you. She's doing a very good job.
Thank you.
It's going to be hard to replace her.
Could you, could you step up to the mic for a second, please, sir? When I talked to Ms. Komorowski, she said that, she's not asking for $19.87. She said that's on average what they were offering. I, I would write a recommendation, my recommendation is $16 an hour. And I don't know what you feel about that.
I would say that's reasonable. See, the job she's doing is, is great, a great job.
I think she's that and more than we expected. And I, I think she's a valuable asset, especially when it comes to you gentlemen over there.
All the inspectors agreed. We all had a little talk and they all agreed to it that she's doing a good job.
And also too, I think, just a few more things too, we can really put ourselves above and beyond departments with the technical stuff that we have available to us. I think she can take us there. So...
So, what is she making now?
She, ten, ten dollars an hour.
And what's your recommendation? I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm going to recommend 16.
That's reasonable.
Well, I made, I made some phone calls. Richmond Township, she's been there for two years. She's had 1402. I made a township and this is where she got her numbers, I'm sure, is 18, 19 an hour, but he's been there 10 years. Ray Township is 1806 and he's been there 10 years. Ira and Casco are both run by their building inspectors and Casco gets paid $50 per inspection, no hourly. So, he's running the department for $50 per inspection. And I don't know if I got what Ira, oh, Ira is $25 an hour and he's been in three years. So, just to put it out there, look at each, each one of these is actually making. She is, Casco are made of Ray Township, she averaged them out at 1987 per hour.
Ira, Casco are made in Ray Townships. I will tell you this, the amount of work that's been done in a short period of time, I'm very impressed with. I don't know if you want to comment on that, the system that she's putting in place with BSNA.
Well, she's doing a lot more than just the building. She's helping out, you know, with the water and then the fire department. We all have a good relationship going. If you have any questions, you ask Denny.
Do you want to comment, Chief?
I agree with the pay raise.
So, where is this funding going to come from? That's what I'd like to know. I responded back to your email and in there I stated that this is an operating expense. We're already 200,000 over our revenues on our budget and this wasn't figured into that. That's number one. Number two, she was hired at $10 an hour. We knew her credentials, she knew her credentials and she agreed to the $10 per hour. We just gave Wesley a dollar and this is a $6 bump. The people that have worked here have not had a real raise since 2006, because I actually went back and looked and it's been 2006. They've had pay in lieu of a raise, but not actual raises since 2006.
June, June 2007, I believe. I think, I think it needs to be addressed across the board. That's why I requested, not, not only for her, but I think there should be a workshop done. I mean, we have some pay issues that are not fair. There's, there's no doubt about it. I mean, we have some individuals that have been here a long time. Their pay for what they do does, it doesn't add up. So, I mean, we've talked about this before. I, it, it needs attention.
And we've talked about that, but I cannot see a $6 jump.
Well, I, maybe not so, but I, I still believe that this is a matter that needs attention across the board.
Here's the other thing. Lennox Township, we're a feeder community to the bigger communities and Denny, you see this all the time. You train the guys and then they get a full-time job and they move on because we can't offer what they would like to make. We're a feeder community. We're either that or we're a retirement community. We, we just aren't McComb Township, we're not Clinton Township, we're not those big townships that can afford that type of wage scale. So...
Can I ask how many hours a week do you...
I'm sorry?
How many hours a week do you...
It's the, it's 30 hours per week. 30 per week.
When, when Ron brought this issue up or we got the letter on and I did talk, I really personally would have liked to waited until, I know she's done a great job. I've talked to all the inspectors. I'd have gotten the same feedback from the inspectors. I really would like to wait until we get this audit done to make sure that everything that's been done, because there are two new people in there that when the auditors are coming to me and asking questions, I don't know how to answer. And so, I'm very nervous that some things have maybe been thrown away or things have been discarded. I said, give us time to see if the auditors agree that she's doing a great job, then I have no problem with it. I do have a problem with $6 an hour. We've got people in here that have not had increases. That would be, that would be a slap in the face to them and I think that's wrong. And I didn't realize that this was going to be on the agenda. So, all of my paperwork was left at my office.
Exactly. I didn't bring my paperwork on this either. And I did talk to, I talked to Bob and I talked to Steve Penovich and they both, you know, said she's doing a great job. But she's doing the job she was hired to do. And I agree with Karen, it would be a slap in the face to the rest of the employees that have been here and been working just as hard.
Now, she started at $10. Is that what she started? That was $10 an hour? So, she hasn't had any raise?
No, because like Wesley's, it was in the motion. There wasn't anything in the motion for Shannon when she was hired in.
What do we normally do?
I'm sorry?
What do we normally do? When's usually the first raise come to somebody? Is it a year or six months on an average?
If I, I can answer that. If we do what's normal, she won't stay here. Will the inspectors stay here, Bob?
No.
That would be her choice. I mean, we can't, we can't give them what we can afford.
I'm just telling you, she will have other opportunities. If, she will get picked up. There's no doubt about it. As far as I'm concerned, she can go anywhere in this county, get a job in the building department. Wouldn't you say?
Easy.
Easily. This is somebody I'm telling you, we do not want to lose. She has all the tools and skills we need and we do not want to lose her. I'm, I'm just saying, if you want that department to run smoothly and execute properly, I would not let her go.
I can understand that, but we cannot base people's raises on whether they're going to decide to stay or leave. We've gone through this before and there's no way I can authorize someone a $6 raise when like we said, there are people that are not making...
If we look at that department and running it, we're seeing, we're seeing a significant savings. Even if we were to give raises, we're seeing...
But we're not seeing a significant increase in building. So, we're not seeing the income...
We weren't before either.
Right. So, that's why she was, it was advertised, she was hired and she agreed at 10. We agreed at 10.
She did, she did agree at 10. I, I...
And right now, we can't, we can't drop $6 an hour. For one, we don't have it. We don't, where are we going to get it?
Well, then, I don't understand if we get it before.
Okay, if she doesn't get it, she's going to quit, she's going to go somewhere else. Well, what about the rest of the people that are here that have stayed through thick and thin when we said, sorry, we can't raise?
I think the rest, I think the rest of the people are underpaid.
Yeah, we are, everybody there is.
I'm not arguing with that point.
But if we don't have it, we can't get it.
The point I'm arguing is we have this issue in front of us. I'm not saying, do I think she'll leave? Eventually, I mean, I would, I would take an opportunity to go somewhere else if I had those skillset. We interviewed all the people, Karen, apart to that, nobody had what she had. So, who's going to train this individual? If, if we get a new person, who's going to handle all that? I don't know where that comes. Unless Bob or Steve or, who's going to train that, that individual?
I, I've said this before and I'll say it again. I keep hearing that people are going to leave if we don't do this stuff for them. We are giving them for 30 hours worth of work, full benefits, a decent wage, not a great wage. I believe 12 or 14 paid vacation days and vacation, paid vac, paid vacation and paid holiday, paid, I'm sorry, 12, 14 paid holidays and vacation days. Really, I don't know that anybody here is that underpaid when you look at the entire package. The medical benefits alone, for November, we spent $12,000 one month for medical benefits. And if they don't take the benefits, they get a stipend. It's, there, nobody here is that underpaid. I would love to give everybody a raise, but when you look at the whole package of what everybody receives here, it's not that bad. The workload is, at times, a little heavy here, election time and tax time, but other than that, nobody here is killing themselves. So, I, all in all, I, I disagree. I don't think it's all that bad to work here. In, in all the years I've been coming to meetings, which has been over 20 years, I can call, call two people that have left for different jobs, two. Everybody else stays here and retires because it is a good job. It is a good place to work and the benefits and the pay together is pretty decent. So, I, I disagree with the $16 an hour. I, I mean, she's been here almost a year. I would like to see more of her work, work record, her attendance, all that stuff, how that's been. If that's all good, I could see definitely, because she's been here a year, giving her something, but...
Well, this goes to your email. This is why we're, this workshop. First, you said it should come as a recommendation for my department, but then you want to, for me to run it, but then you want to put all the things in place that it should be doing. So, that takes away from me saying what I need over there.
Wow.
You want to lay that criteria down? Sure, we can get people all day long at $10 an hour. You want to see the kind of job that's going to take place in there?
Actually, for $10 an hour, they do a great job in there. Everybody here does.
She'll go someplace else, I guarantee it.
And that would be her choice. That's not the reason to give somebody a huge raise because we're afraid they're going to go somewhere else. If they choose to go somewhere else, they choose to go somewhere else.
I think it's a, it's a good tool when you have to give money to keep, when you get a good person in place.
If we go for it, if we go for it.
Well, if we were paying for that department, our expenditures were a lot higher, a lot higher. Matter of fact, what was the total amount higher that we cut that department down? I mean, we have some...
But you also had somebody in there that had been there with 20, 27 years.
We're looking at cost. I mean, if we're looking at cost.
She's been there less than a year, not even a full year.
Okay, when the receptionist was hired, it was 50 cents after 90 days. And when Karen Keltz was hired, it was a dollar after 90 days. And Wesley was a dollar after he got his S1 or S4 certification. I could see doing that dollar that we did with the rest and I could even see going back to her 90 days.
I would agree with that.
Retro that back to her 90 days.
That would be fair.
And like Karen said that too, she wanted to see how the audit goes and everything, make sure everything's been done for her.
Can I, can I ask, between Carol and Nancy, weren't they come by making something like about 10, 12, 30 some dollars an hour? You've got two people in there now that are making $18 an hour combined.
I didn't want to quote that exact number, but that's what I mean by significant savings. It's almost cut in half.
And Peggy, that is a true statement, but here's twofold. And I haven't pulled the numbers, but the building department is supposed to be self-sufficient. We can't make money or lose money.
Right.
Okay, we've been, the general fund has been really picking up because there hasn't been anything. You know, then it was said, Denny is using her and Cam is using her. All right, that's another thing to look at. But just to have this added to the agenda at $16 an hour and not look at giving someone...
That was a recommendation.
A $6 an hour raise.
Well, I'm not necessarily saying she should get $6 an hour right off the bat, but I've seen how easy she's made things for Bob and I'm sure she's made it easy for him, she's made it easy for Bob and Steve too. And I think she definitely deserves a raise.
And I'm not saying she doesn't because I agree with that part of it. I'm just looking at the amount and I'm looking at the bottom line. We're already 200,000, our budget already is stating we're 200,000 in the hole. Operating budget, payroll is in operating. So, that's what I'm looking at.
How much work does she do for the fire department?
She doesn't do work for the fire department.
Oh, for you?
No.
Well, how did you get brought into it?
I have no idea. She doesn't do work for the fire department.
I would, I will, just, my last comments are, she's a very, she's a very valuable asset to that department, I feel. They're both doing a good job in there. Have you had any issues with either one of them?
Well, the best I can do at this point until we look at things and like you said, you want to have a meeting and talk about everybody's wages and then we're going to have to sharpen our pencils. I make a motion to do a dollar an hour raise going back to her 90 days. So, it would be retroed back to when she was, when she received her 90 days.
Support. Motion by clerk Keith, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussions?
The only comment I want to make is, who will be next then? Will her assistant come to us then and say she wants a raise? I mean...
The what-if question.
We have to, you know, it's just, right, it's a what-if comment.
Well, it's all like we're going to, definitely it's, once this word gets out, everybody's going to jump on the mantle. So, we are going to have to sit down, sat on the board with a workshop and say, okay, what are we going to do? Where, what are we going to do? It's not just our insurance. Some of this money's got to come from somewhere. Are we willing to give up some of these paid holidays that they got? Or is, you know, some of the heads of the departments willing to give up some of their pay that has been done in the past to help the people out in those offices? So, all of this needs to be addressed.
So all of this needs to be addressed. Yeah, we're, we're opening a can of worms here, that's definitely.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Public comment? Any public comment at this time? No public comment?
I make a motion to adjourn at six ten or five ten.
Support. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.